Right, right, right.
Thanks for the promotion.
You got me okay, Mike? Yes, you do.
Okay.
Set.
Ready.
Set.
If you're ready.
Set, Mike. Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Selectmen meeting for January twenty-three. And we apologize that we went over a little in our executive session that we had before this. We remind everybody that we're video recording and we take a moment to appreciate our troops who are serving the country. Thank you. And our first appointment is with our town clerk, Marion Vinaldi. Thank you for coming, Marion. Request the following: Vote to accept the early in-person voting schedules for the following elections: Presidential primary election, March five; state elections, September three; presidential election, November five. And then you go on with the long vote to appoint the following: Huge number of people. Request for inspections for the elections. Vote to opt out of voting day by mail for the town election. And vote to place a question on the ballot of the March twenty-fifth election revocation of civil service. Welcome.
Thank you.
Got a lot of things going on, huh?
Yep, twenty twenty-four. Here we go. So, election season has started, as I'm sure you're all aware. So, one of the first things that I wanted to take care of is the early voting schedule. And I just thought that I had to do it for the entire year. I think in twenty twenty, it was a little bit more disjointed, and I might have come before you three times, but at any rate. So, I have it all set. We're basically mandated by the state for the primaries to do it the week prior, including at least one weekend, Saturday or Sunday, or both so many hours on the weekends. We've always opted to do all of our weekend hours on a Saturday as opposed to Saturday and Sunday, just so that myself and my election workers can actually have a day off for the weekend. And then, so that's for the primary in March, the primary in September. And then for the presidential election in November, we are required to have two weeks of early voting here at Town Hall. So, I have the dates and the times listed out. You know, I'm trying to keep evening hours on the Tuesdays, trying to keep the schedule as normal as what our Town Hall hours are. I'm planning on putting it in the Hometown Weekly, posting at the senior center, hopefully having the electric sign out front when we kind of get going here a little bit, so that we can drive as many people to early voting. And then, the election workers, I would need those appointments, as well as Tracy Clank as the warden and Molly Slaney as the assistant warden. And that would be for all elections. You can do it piece by piece, or you can do the whole shebang tonight. We do have the ballot question for the local election ballot, which will take place on March twenty-fifth. That has to do with the civil service law that was voted on at town meeting last year, which is the yes/no question. I believe you have that in front of you. I just need the language voted on, because I'll be printing ballots for that election at the beginning of February. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk to you about is the vote by mail for the local election. So, as you know, in twenty twenty, things kind of got a little bit disjointed and then new with the vote by mail. For the primary in twenty twenty, we did not have vote by mail. Then the world shut down due to COVID around St. Patrick's Day of twenty twenty. And then, the vote by mail kind of began, and the Vote by Mail Act was signed in twenty twenty-two. So, I'm sure you've all, at this point, got the postcards in the mail. So, if you notice on those postcards, there's a selection for all elections. And then it lists the three state elections: the primary coming up in March, the one in September, and then obviously the November election. Our local election is not included on that postcard, because this is a state legislation that went through. Because they have that ticket, that tick box of all elections, there could possibly be some confusion with some people that might be anticipating us getting a local election ballot. In terms of, there's a few reasons why I would like you to opt out of early voting for the local election. The main reason is, is that I've got a time problem. I have a primary election on March fifth, and I have a local election twenty days later on March twenty-fifth. I have no way of telling you how many vote by mail ballots I'm going to be getting for that primary. Unfortunately, because all of this data started in twenty twenty, I don't really have data for you, because this was after the local election. I can't tell you going backwards, in terms of, at that point, it was just absentee voting that we had, that we were averaging about only getting about a third of our absentee ballots back that got sent out. People would say, "I want absentee ballot," then it wouldn't get it back. So, I wouldn't be, if you did not opt out, I would not be sending any local ballots out till after the primary, because otherwise I got a mess. The way, unfortunately, the state system is set up right now, they're in the process of rolling out a brand-new software for the state, because, you know, it's twenty twenty-four. Why wouldn't we do that now, as opposed to last year? But that's okay. So, there, I have to re-enter every single card per election. So, for twenty twenty, for example, for the primary in September, I got forty-five-hundred ballots. I would be then having to send out forty-five-hundred ballots to the local election. So, within a twenty-day period, I would not only have to send those out, I have to enter them all, send them out, post them, get them back, and then take them to the election, as well as living my life with other things going on down there. So, not to mention that there is a cost involved. It's not that I can't do it. I can get anything done. It's just I would have to bring people in here to help me do that. You've got a postage situation going on. It's going to cost about ninety-seven cents per ballot that leaves this office. I can argue with the state and fight with the state about getting money back for their state elections that we put, that the town of Medfield puts money up for. And I can argue for local. I just don't know if I'm going to have that much success with getting the money back. So, if you have any questions, feel free to throw them at me, but that's kind of where I'm coming at it. There is always absentee. There's always absentee. So, all I'm asking to do is not have that postcard include local election. If there is a resident that wanted me to mail them a ballot for the local election, they could fill out an absentee application, and I'm absolutely happy to do that. I'm just not looking to waste the town's money and time. So, otherwise, that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Marion.
You're welcome.
Gus, questions, comments?
Let me run, I'll start through all the topics at the start.
All right.
With the schedule. So, first, I think you answered my first question. The dates that we have here are a reflection of what the law requires us to have.
Yes.
In terms of the days.
Yes.
Not a request, not anything, just in, well, first, the question is, in the past elections that we've had, who actually takes advantage of the early voting? From a demographic standpoint, is seniors, is it?
To be honest with you, it is not, no, it's not seniors, because the seniors in this town go to the polls on Election Day. I'll be honest with you, it's more of the people driving by on their way to work, and they'll see the sign and go, "Oh, I'll do this now." Somebody's going to Avenue. It's not, I've been disappointed with the early voting numbers in the past. And it's one of my goals to try and get it up, because I like the idea of people voting in person. You know, but I want to give them as much opportunity to do it. I don't have a particular demographic for you, Gus.
Okay. Well, so, I'll tell you why I asked the question.
Okay.
First, just generally from my standpoint, while I like the idea that people have the opportunity to, you know, I wouldn't want people not to vote, because they couldn't make it on Election Day.
Sure.
The longer it's extended forward, the more concerned I get. First, because of, on a national level, I'm not talking about here, the potential for mischief gets larger. But the real reason is because people that vote really, really early, why bother having a campaign season if the campaign season actually ends weeks before the election? Because some people have committed before they've actually considered it. So, I think the federal, you don't have any choice, but the two weeks, that's fine.
Yes, unfortunately, it has to be the week before. And the way the state does it is they break down the rules based on the population number of the town. So, you'll see that smaller towns don't have as strict a requirement as larger towns.
The reason I asked who, and you kind of gave me the answer I was thinking could be the answer, is people going to work. And I know this will make things less pleasant. So, this is feedback, not a specific request, it's just an observation. If it's most, if there's a good number of people who are going to work that do this, probably a nine AM start time for early voting is not, during the week, is not a good time. We ought to, in the same way, we've got, you know, seven PM, where they can do that when they come back from work.
Right.
Actually, if you're really trying to attract more people, I would at least, if not now, but at some point, consider having one or two days that actually start maybe as early as six AM or at least seven AM to capture the, if that's who the people are that do it, and I can see how that could be. I just, that's the one thing, that's one reaction I have when I look at the time. So, that's first. I have no objections to the idea that we would just approve all the people that you've recommended. The only question I had on that one is, I recall last year, or two, last year or two years ago, we had some people who had positions, I think, in either, I guess, the Democratic or Republican Party here in town, who actually couldn't be this. I'm assuming that, A, we don't have that problem here, because you have been on top of that. And I'm assuming that to the extent there is any distribution, it's an equal distribution between the two parties and independents, and I recognize a lot of the names, I know that they've been on.
Right. The majority of the people in town are actually registered unenrolled, but the distribution that you're talking about happens more actually at the election.
Yeah.
Where you'll notice when you come in, I have two people sitting at the checkout table. I have to have all parties represented. I can't have all Republicans at one party, one table, check-in, and all Democrats. I have to split it all up. The majority are unenrolled, though, here in Medfield, so I'm actually constantly hunting for party affiliation.
Okay.
Do you want to just explain unenrolled versus independent? Because we had this discussion with somebody yesterday.
Yeah, so, independent is not what a word that is used anymore. When, there's a bunch of different political parties, obviously, other than just Republican, Libertarian, and Democrat, those are the ones that have the ballots. But what started happening is independent was a term that was used, basically, when you did not want to be in a party. You did not want a party affiliation. So, the state changed it to unenrolled, because there was a lot of other political people that were coming forward, and they were creating political party names of like United Independent, so when people were voting, if they didn't know what word they were looking for, they'd just select that. So, the independent, meaning you are not affiliated with a party, is now referred to by the state as unenrolled.
Okay. So, third item, the ballot question. I assume that it's been reviewed, you know, it's been vetted for legal legality.
Went up to outside council.
Okay.
Outside council took care of that, yep.
Okay. I thought that sounded fine. And then finally, the Voting Act request here. I, speaking personally, the changes that were made in twenty twenty, I looked and said, "Why didn't we just expand eligibility for the absentee voting process?" Because that was an established, validated process, it would have been straightforward. So, from a, just general philosophy standpoint, totally on board with what you've asked for us to do here.
Okay.
I really think it's the right thing to do. I think absentee balloting is what's there for people who can't make it, and you ought to, for the amount of people that pay attention to really thinking through issues, it's probably not too much to expect them to actually look ahead and say, "Can I get to the polls? And if I can't, let me ask for a ballot." Making it easier to get it, that's fine, but that's how I would have done it. Having said that, I would invite anybody listening here, to the public or downstream, if there's people who have a different view of that, and that they find this, you know, difficult or objectionable, I would personally like to hear your back on that. Not because, I'll support this tonight, but if my opinion isn't shared by everybody in town, and there's somebody who's got strong feelings, they think I'm totally wrong, I invite them to certainly let me know or let you know.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Because if it's not what people want, then I'll listen to it, even though I don't think it's the right, I think this is the right thing to do.
Right. I have been polling the different towns that surround us, asking the same question as well. They have, their election season is a little bit different, because they typically have town meeting, and then their election is in May. They're the opposite of us. But I know Westwood, Norfolk, they have opted out of early voting for a local election. It's more of a budget, time-consuming situation. But again, if anybody wants a ballot, I mean, I can give them a ballot, it's just...
I'm on board with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. That's it.
All set? Hi, Elaine.
I'm all set. I completely appreciate what you're trying to do. I understand the whole challenge for the September twenty-fifth local election, so I'm good.
Perfect.
I'm good with everything, too, Marion, and I like saving the sixty-five-hundred on the local election by not having the vote by mail for that one. So, I was a little surprised that it was that expensive, but when you talk about the ninety-seven cent postage and forty-five-hundred.
And we order our ballots for the local election, so with printing costs and everything else, it's quite a lot of ballots.
All right. So, we're all set, then? We can go ahead and vote?
I'm all set.
Okay, do you wanna do a motion?
So, a motion to accept your early in-person voting schedule as presented in our info packet for the presidential primary election, March fifth, state election, September third, presidential election, November fifth. Vote to appoint.
Better vote them separately.
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next.
Next?
Uh, next is motion to appoint the following, Ms. Tracy Klink as warden and Ms. Molly Sliney as assistant warden for the state election on March fifth, twenty twenty-four, annual town election on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, annual town meeting on May sixth, twenty twenty-four, state election on September third, twenty twenty-four, and presidential election on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, for precincts one through four.
And the second part.
Okay, and the request inspectors for the elections as provided in the meeting packet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, and motion to vote to opt out of voting by mail for March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four election.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, next?
And then vote to place a question on the ballot for the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four election revocation of civil service.
Second.
You should indicate in the form, if that was in your packet or whatever. Was it in the packet?
Not in the packet.
Well, it's on the packet, but it's on the desk.
Can you read it, honey? So, this right here, the proposed ballot question?
You don't need to read the summary, just the question.
Okay, so the proposed ballot question for March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four is, shall the town's acceptance of chapter thirty-one of the general laws, civil service law, be revoked for the ranks of patrol officer, sergeant, and deputy chief in the police department?
Yes, no. Uh, do we have?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess we're all set, thank you.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Marion.
Uh, let's see, uh, discussion items, potential votes, twenty twenty-four town meeting and FY twenty-five.
Number two, I'm in Noponset River.
Oh, I'm sorry. Skipped right over Noponset River Watershed Association to present FY twenty-four, twenty-five Regional Climate Project. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Is there a way for us to share the presentation?
Yep, I'm throwing it out.
Vah, vah, there you go.
Thank you, easy.
You guys have great graphics in your presentation.
So, thank you for having us. Um, we're here to kind of talk about the extension of the project that we worked on the previous year. We did a, we had the flood model project for FY twenty-three, and now we're extending it from FY twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-five. If you wanna go to the next one? And so, I'll be presenting for you today. We, I'm Jeff Frisch, I'm the Watershed Resilience Planner for the Noponset River Watershed Association, and.
I'm Martin Pillsbury, the Director of Environmental Planning at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, your regional planning agency. And we're partnering with, uh, Noponset, and also, we have a third partner on this, which is Weston and Sampson Engineers, who all do all of the behind-the-scenes modeling work. So, it's been a, a good collaboration between all three entities.
Go ahead to the next one. And so first, we're gonna talk a little bit about the results from last year. So, we did a watershed-wide model, um, which I think you've also done with the Charles River Watershed Association. And this is one of the outputs, it's showing how much the, the increases in area flooded, as well as the increases in, in volume of flooding, which don't always match up. But in Medfield, you can see that there's, there's an increase there of ten to, ten to twenty percent of like the landmass that would be covered in water. And then on the right, you can see there's even a greater increase in the volume of water. So, between sixty and seventy percent increase, um, in the, in what you're seeing.
Is this past or projected? I don't understand the twenty-seventy.
This, this is a different, this is, so there's like baseline, which is what we're seeing now. And then there's the expectations for precipitation in twenty-seventy to be increased. And so, this is kind of the, the difference between what we're seeing now versus what we think we're gonna be seeing in twenty-seventy.
Matt show twenty-seventy increases amounts?
Yeah, it shows a difference between the now versus twenty-seventy.
So, the, is it the left picture?
They're, they're both, they show different things. The left one, sorry for not being clear, but the left one shows the amount of area that's covered, the amount of area that's flooded. And the one on the right, the difference, and then the right shows the difference of the amount of volume of flooding.
I get that, but is that two pictures of twenty-seventy projected, or is that present?
It's a, it's a difference between twenty-seventy, the baseline towards twenty-seventy. So, like, from, you're seeing a ten to twenty percent increase from now to twenty-seventy.
So.
Percentage change, Gus?
Yeah, it's a percentage.
No, so, I get that on the, I get that on the right-hand side, I don't get it on the left-hand side, because I'm thinking percentage change is if there's a baseline, the percentage change is an area change. So, there's some picture of current that's smaller, I guess, than that.
Yep, so it's, it's showing that there's gonna be more area flooded in twenty-seventy.
Based on Weston and Sampson, I, I guess really what I'm looking, so the project, what's, I don't know where the projections for fifty years from now, what they're based on, I guess is what I'm really saying.
Okay, um, we'll go to the next one, and we can talk a little bit more about that. So, this is, this is, this is like a based on a two-year, it's supposed to happen every one, every two years, but it's kind of, it's happening a lot more frequently, and so, um, this is, this is kind of the baseline. Current is on the left, and the future is on the right. And you can't see, it's, it's a little hard to see on this, but there's areas that are darker, and there's areas that are expanded. And so, that shows more flooding depth. And, and what we're seeing now, so the, the current storm, it's three point five inches in a twenty-four hour storm, which we've been seeing, I think, a lot of towns have seen a few times in the last several months. And, and then to go to twenty-seventy, you're expecting four and a half inches of rain to fall in the same storm. So, an inch more in a twenty-four hour period for this, this like.
I'm gonna apologize in advance, I probably will be your, the gadfly for this whole thing.
No, you're alright.
The only, the only thing that I see different between, it could be my eyesight, so.
Yeah.
The only thing I really see different between the left picture and the right picture is the blue area below the word Medfield.
Yeah.
Everything else looks the same.
There, there's some expansion of the areas flooded in the other spots, it's just, it's just hard to see.
Okay, alright.
But, I guess, that is one of the areas that I would say to focus on, cause it's.
Okay.
And it's, and the, the changes in color are, are a foot of flooding difference, so it's, it's pretty, it's a lot.
Okay.
So, I am curious though, now, this past summer, we finally got rain. The summer before, this place was a desert, right? So, are we taking that into account, where we had two summers ago, we were really low?
Yep.
Now, it's one of those winters where we're making up for need of water.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll get into a little bit more of that, but.
This is a picture of a twenty-four hour flood, so this is what a severe flood.
Yeah, this is, but this is.
So, this isn't even total, this isn't total rainfall, this is just flood.
Yeah, and this is a smaller, this is a smaller storm. Like, this is, it's supposed to happen every once, every two years, three and a half inches of rain. And I know that like where I live, that is not too far away, we've gotten a couple of three inches rainstorms in the last month or two months, so.
Sure have.
So, can you, can you locate me the, the blue area below the word Medfield? That's behind the Wheelock School, is that where that is? That's where our wells are?
I'm not, I'm not sure, sorry.
I think they, I think that's what it is.
I think it would be not behind the Wheelock Schools, going towards Philip Street.
Well, you can see Nebo Street up next to, to the left of the upper dark blue. So, I think it's that whole wetlands area behind the Wheelock School up through, there's a lot of wetlands behind off of Nebo, too.
There's, there's wetlands across the street from Wheelock.
Okay.
Like Stevens Pond.
Did you, did you experience flooding in the last couple storms in the town?
Yeah.
Cause what, yeah.
Yeah, and so, that's, I mean, that's.
It's the Charles River floodplain, though.
Okay.
It's actually working the way it's supposed to.
Okay, yeah, cause I know that you guys straddle the Charles River and the Noponset River. Can we go to the next one? Yeah. Um, and so, we're working, this, part of what we did last year was a regional climate resilience framework. And that's, that's kind of looking through the priorities that towns, the towns in the watershed had, kind of putting all those in one spot, and then kind of like seeing what the, and having some people in the town look and see like what the priorities are, and we had, we had a spreadsheet that kind of helped us identify those. And so, out of that, we kind of created this framework, which is like, which is regional priorities that, that, that people agreed upon from the, the different towns. And so, some of the, and so, part of that was the creation of the collaborative. And what the collaborative is supposed to do is foster partnerships within the watershed between different towns to become more resilient to, to flooding or any other climate impacts. To look at goals for priority actions that can be worked on collectively, collaboratively, between the different towns, sharing both like the financial costs, but also the planning costs and everything that goes into that. I think you, you've been part of this, with that, with the climate, with the Charles River, the climate compact for a few more new years now, cause they're a little bit of head. And we're trying to do the same thing in the Noponset River Watershed Association. And then kind of identify places for technical assistance and funding opportunities on like a watershed scale, so we can look at larger projects and have, that have an impact in all the different towns. And I think that by working together and doing like larger projects, there can be more of an impact in the watershed. And then to support the implementation of projects throughout the, the region, um, to work on climate adaption collectively.
So, here's what I need you to clarify for me, item, item two.
Item two.
It, it, um, when we're talking about the environment, we're talking about weather, we're talking climate.
Yep.
Those are physical science issues.
Yep.
Uh, and so, I'm assuming Weston Sampson is the one that's, I, I'm assuming you guys have some technical expertise. I shouldn't just say Weston Sampson, but it sounds like Weston and Sampson is bringing in in-depth, I'll call it physi- physical science expertise.
Yeah.
Because in a sense, it's a technical question. This says, you're gonna look this particularly through the lens of equity, and I don't understand how, it may sound like a dumb question, but it's not. I don't understand how the lens of equity is going to influence how we look at how to prepare for environmental, you know, implications of climate change over the next fifty years. How does that affect what we think we need to do?
Cause, um, there's, part of it is that there's different, different communities and different areas are gonna be affected generally by climate change. I think that in this, and like what we've, we've been working so far with the model, a lot of it's about like flooding, and a lot, and like that happens, I mean, there's like flooding all throughout the watershed, and the same amount of rainfalls everywhere. But when you're thinking about things like heat and areas that have a lot more hardscape and less trees and less parkland, those areas are affected a lot more. And those, those areas tend to be, um, lower income, or, and, um, they might not have the resources to, to deal with the heat, cause it's, there's a lot.
So, I, I told you it was gonna be the gadfly here, and, and it's almost gonna sound like a rant, but I'm not. Really, I'm not saying that, I'm saying certain, certain terms we use in today's world, as soon as you use them, it takes on a political tone, and this one's one of them. But the issue isn't to argue against worrying about people who are in a hardscape area or something like that.
Yep.
In my own head, it's like, we're going to be looking at those areas that are most affected by climate. I understand, some of them certainly would be people that are in more hardscape areas. But when it sounds like, particularly through the lens of equity, it's like, no, it should be particularly through the lens of where these, these things will have the greatest impact on people. Where, where, if, if that's what it means, then I'm, I think that's a really good thing. If it means, well, we're gonna look at certain groups that we've determined are more needy, and that's where we're gonna throw our money, and we'll let these other people drown, then it doesn't, or, or overheat, or whatever it is, it doesn't come across right. You see what I'm, and I'm, I'm wordsmithing your slide, and I'm not trying to do that. I'm trying to be sure I understand the intent of this effort, cause when we get to the actions, you're gonna be asking for representatives, and I wanna make sure it's a worthwhile thing to be supporting.
Right, yeah.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I, I think that what we're trying to do is on a watershed-wide scale. So, we're looking at the whole watershed, and whether it's flooding, whether it's heat, we're gonna be, we're gonna be focusing on all those things and looking at them, how, how they impact a particular region. Like, it, it just happens that some places are impacted more, and some places have historically not had the, um, had the, had the help, um, that other places have. And so, we just wanna make sure that all those places are getting, are getting the resources that they need. Whether it's, I don't know if that explains it well.
Could I maybe add to that? So, I think you're on an interesting track, it's, but it's not just geographically that some areas are more affected. It's certain populations are more affected. So, for instance, those with respiratory problems are, are going to be, which could, there's a lot of different categories of folks with that kind of a medical condition, a lot of our seniors, et cetera. They, as a, as a group, would be more affected by some of these, for instance, high heat events and air pollution that occurs with it. So, and, and it's hard to like say, okay, they all live in this one place. It's no, that's part of our population, it's kind of scattered around everywhere. Um, and in towns like Medfield, probably your senior population might be one of your more vulnerable populations when it comes to what, how they would be impacted by some of these impacts. That's just an example. So, um, it's not, it, it is partly saying, oh, over here it will flood. That's a geographically-based physical science. There's flooding here, over here it may not flood. But then there's other ways of looking at it. How, who will be vulnerable to those impacts?
So, I get that, and this is the piece, and actually, I'm glad you explained it that way, cause I, I agree with you. The issue is, for me, when I think of the Charles River Watershed Association, or the Noponset River Watershed Association, my head would go in the direction more of the physical science. When you start, and to include certainly impacts, and, and you wouldn't wanna, for instance, ignore a heat, heat island. Well, but we do rivers, I'm not saying that. But some of what you're talking about there starts to bridge the gap over into what I guess I'll call the social welfare space. Terms of understanding the particular conditions that certain people have, and how those, how a physical environmental impact affects specific, you know, particular groups. And the piece that I'm having the hard time calibrating here is, why would, I'll put it this way, maybe it's too awkward. Why would you guys be the ones to do that?
Well, I think that the answer to that is that we're looking broadly at what the impacts of all of these different changes in the environment will have on, on the community. Now, some of them are straightforward impacts on the infrastructure, where you have roads that flood, et cetera. But some of them are impacts on people. So, like, for instance, more, uh, endangered species impacts, environmental impacts, could be from the drought and changes of the river. But then also things like more mosquitoes and mosquito-borne diseases, and things like, like the heat and air quality impacts. Another one we sometimes look at is that one of the more potentially vulnerable populations are seniors living alone. Living, you know, with like, in a, in a home without health. So, that if there is an emergency, they're harder to get to, they're harder to reach, they may not have the resources to evacuate on their own. So, there's, it's those kind of considerations that we bring into it. It's like the first, you're right, the first instinct is to just say, let's figure out what's the physical impacts are. Then the next question is, but what's the impact that those have on our communities and on, on the folks in our communities?
Who are the people that you have, so this is maybe the blind spot. Who are the people that you have in the group that have the expertise to know what seniors need to reckon? It's one thing to say, this is gonna be hot, and, but then getting that to translate to groups of people and what it's gonna affect them, that feels, seems to me more like a social welfare type of, and I don't mean social welfare like in a bad way. I mean, social worker kind of welfare. That seem, do you?
It's more like a public health approach.
Oh, or public health, okay.
It's really a public health approach.
So, you have public health people that are also involved in this effort?
We actually have a whole Department of Public Health at MAPC, absolutely, yeah.
Who are involved in this effort?
Yes, they help out.
Okay, okay, that's, that, thank you.
That's kind of the, I think maybe, look at it through that public health lens.
Okay.
And then across the whole spectrum of our populations and our towns, not everyone is gonna react to these or same threats in the same way, have the same impact on, or have the same ability to respond, like the senior living in home example. So, that's kind of.
That's true, my questions were going, is do you actually have people who know what they're talking about as opposed to people who have a political predisposition, who actually don't know what they're talking about, but think that this is what you have to do? That's what I was, okay, great, thank you.
We're also relying on public officials from the towns, and we're also doing a lot of outreach to people and like, and like getting the community together and finding out what their concerns are and what they're worried about, and kind of building those into the plan.
Okay, thank, thanks.
Anything else, Gus?
Nope, that's it.
Eileen?
Well, they're not done yet either, but I kinda jumped into it, so.
Mark? Just for clarification, are you just limited to the Noponset Valley wa- the Noponset River watershed? Or you bringing the Charles River watershed into it? Because Medfield is more in the Charles River than.
Yeah, or, this project is focused on the, the Noponset River, but we do work with the Charles River on, on different things, too. So, I guess, I think we've come jointly to Medfield in a few different ways to talk about, talk about different impacts before.
The Charles River part of your town has actually already gone under a project similar to this a few years earlier, led by the Charles River Watershed Association, so that. So that, that's actually been ahead of the game. And now the Nippon's River Watershed Association is working to do something very similar across. And you happen to be one of the communities that straddles those, those two watersheds.
So you guys want to go ahead with your presentation then?
I promise I'll be quiet until you get to the end.
So maybe I'll, I'll step in here as part of M A P C because one of the things that we did in last year's program is we held a workshop where we talked about what are some of the climate resilience strategies commun- communities can use in their land use planning? So looking at things like stormwater bylaws, zoning, subdivision, like how can you take into account some of these changes in flooding and all of that in the way you. And, and we've put together a toolkit online of some of the better examples of communities that have already adopted some of these bylaws and regulations at the local level. And, and that's, that's just the webpage cover for a resource that we have available for folks. We gave a kind of a workshop, walking through it with some of the details and we'll continue to be building this up and looking for a good example. So especially for the planners and conservation agents within communities, this can, can be a useful resource that we put together and we want to continue to update it. And I guess we can go ahead too. So actually, we're, we're going to then talk a little bit about public engagement. There's, there's several layers or tiers of public engagement. One of them is, as you know, we're looking to put together, uh, getting delegates from each community to a, a watershed wide group. With also representing municipalities. We're also looking to reach out directly to members and stakeholders and members of the community. And we have an advisory group that we're setting up to do that. There's an initial meeting of that that happened a few months ago and there'll be a second meeting of that coming up next month. And we're still open to more members being interested. So if you know folks, not through the official offices of the town, but just residents or other stakeholders, businesses who might be interested in participating in that, the, the welcome mat is down for that. Uh, that will be occasional meetings over the next year and a half. Uh, the next one however, being February twentieth, so there's an opportunity coming up for anyone to jump onto that if they haven't done it before.
I got to jump in, so and the purpose of this engagement is to provide information to the public or to collect information?
Two-way communication, exactly. Give people a chance to say what are their interests or what are their concerns? What, and for us to let, let them know, here's what the project's doing, here's the information it will provide you with. Uh, we really want that to be a conversation, we want that to be an opportunity for two-way communication. And then the last piece I'll mention, and this is something the Ponset River Watershed Association is leading the charge on, is that working with um, school education programs. And I've done a, a lot of this around for many years now with water conservation and some other issues. Uh, and so that's, they'll be continuing to work in that realm as well. So that's kind of like, there's several different layers of outreach, education, engagement within the communities. So, you know, actually we've talked through a lot of this already right now, so I think we can fast forward through some of these slides here. But we just wanted to remind folks that, that climate change is a multifaceted issue. We talk a lot about flooding, uh, but we, but it's also the heat impacts. It's also for coastal communities, obviously the sea level rise. I think obviously that's not an issue for Medfield yet anyway. Uh, it's going to have to get a lot worse before you have coastal issues. Uh, and precipitation change and even the high winds, the microbursts and the higher, higher velocity winds we're seeing and just the thunderstorms that, we've always had these storms. It's just that they're getting more intense, we're seeing more tree fall, more power outages because of that. And so these are things that communities are already trying to respond to. It's always been a challenge and I think it's just going to become a little more challenging. So they, those are some of the main things we're, we're trying to track the trends and think through what the impacts on the communities will be and what measures you might be able to take. And I'll mention that this feeds into something else that communities are already doing now. And that is having a local hazard mitigation plan. I know we've worked on many communities developing that, that's a program under FEMA where you identify your local natural hazards and figure out how you're going to be able to manage those. Uh, and also the municipal vulnerability preparedness program that the state put together, M V P program. So there's a few other programs out there that have been some planning that has been able to go on in individual towns. What we're trying to do in the Ponset watershed here is knit together and say that these, we're all, all the communities all around here are facing these, these very same trends and change challenges. And are things we can do together that will be better than what if everyone is only acting alone. There's still plenty of things each community needs to do on its own, doesn't take away from that. But there could be benefits and cost savings in some cases from being able to work collectively, collectively. So that's kind of.
Do you have an example, I mean, that sounds good. And it, it sounds like you do look at the municipal multirealty plans that towns have.
Right.
What would be an example of, if you have them yet?
Well, you know, there, there's a number of drainage and, and flooding problems we've talked up and down the watershed that are actually at the town boundaries between two towns. And there's a few dams that are at the dam, boundaries between two towns. I know we just did a project in Norfolk and they're looking at a dam was on the line with Rhythm. So the, those kinds of things, I mean, it's town specific, it'll be different in every community. But these are some of the things that there may be opportunities to deal with those better in a jointly or coordinated way. And there may be, you may have more access to grant funding if you work together and put together. Sometimes a bigger idea that covers more is going to be more fundable. Uh, because that's the way the grant sources themselves are looking for, to spend their money in a way that's going to have a greater impact. So that's the idea. So yeah, it's just, these are the major categories of climate change, it's not just the flooding. And even though this is the Watershed Association and that, and we start out looking at the flooding and we have a flood model. These other impacts of climate change is something we want to take into account as well.
But at a, at an action level, I try, as opposed to the broad philosophical discussions of climate change. I looked at these pictures and said, okay, yeah, what's this telling me? Nothing I don't know.
Taking actions on these are, is yet to happen in some cases. So what we're doing is laying the groundwork, first of all, just even understanding what the challenges are. And then thinking about how they're impacting the communities. And I think that it's the idea to set communities up to be able to, in the future, that maybe not even thought, a long term, mid, middle, short term, mid-term, long term perhaps. Take certain actions. So you know, you don't jump right to actions necessarily, although sometimes you have an emergency and you have to. Uh, but the idea is by aligning all the best data we have to characterize the problem, see how it's affecting your community, your neighbor's community. Where, what, what is of a local nature, what is of a more regional nature in terms of some of these issues? I think that that really is, it's aimed towards being able to take more effective action in the future, which maybe there's really no projects on the ground right now. But that's what we're trying to be prepared for and to do it in a thoughtful way.
What I'm most concerned is that it not become just a political cloud conversation that, that, that goes.
Well, we don't want to, we don't want that kind of a conversation either. That's, that's not what we're, we're looking for something pragmatic that will actually, you know, give you sort of results.
Okay.
I think we can jump through those next few slides, right?
Yeah.
That, you know, I mean, each of these talks a little bit more detail about heat and precipitation, but we've kind of covered that ground already, so we don't need to go. And we can jump ahead, maybe stop for one minute about that one because, you know, we talked a lot about impacts on the community and impacts on the populations. There are also impacts on the environmental resources when we have these droughts, for instance, and stream flows become so low that they might really help hurt the aquatic habitat. Uh, or if they're not dried up completely, the lower stream flows create water quality problems. Or the, the stream temperatures actually increase so much that that can lead to either fish kills or impacts. So those are just a few examples. Um, you know, the, the cyanobacteria that we're seeing in the algal blooms in some of our lakes, ponds and rivers that could make it so that they're not even safe to swim in. And raises questions about some of our drinking water sources. And the things like the mosquitoes and, 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 you know, West Nile and that sort of thing. These are things we already have, but the, the higher heat is likely to make them more prevalent and more widespread in the future. So that's what, these are some of the things to consider just sort of as a broad background to, to some of the other aspects of what climate change will have, impacts are having. And that, I think we can go on and I'll give, turn it back to Jeff to wrap up with just talking a little bit about this phase two.
And so now like this, that's kind of been like sort of the background of what we did in the first phase. We built the flood model, we kind of created the framework of climate action priorities. And now this time, now we're on to the next phase, which is a two-year project. If you want to go to the next slide. And so this is kind of a, a brief overview of the different things that are going on. We're doing some enhanced flood modeling, so we're, we're taking the input, the flood model that we had and kind of building on it and, and finding more, putting more information into it. So that it can become more accurate and better represent what we're expecting to see. I was in this more, out this morning measuring culverts to, to put, and put those into the model. So I've been in the field this morning working on that particular thing. And then we're doing community education, which we talked about, of course. We have the community advisory committee, which Martin mentioned earlier. Um, and that we, we are, we are, we have a meeting coming up on the twentieth. And that's kind of a collection of community groups, so we're trying to get more people, the, hear from more people, have, having to go through like community leaders and then hearing from, from them. Um, we have the climate collaborative, which is, we're creating, which is kind of a part of, a big part of steering what we have going on. And kind of the, the ask we have is sort of involved in that later on. And then we're going to start looking at conceptual designs for where, where can we, where can we put things to have the, the most impact on, on the flooding? And um, this might start in areas that have the most flooding and then um, as we, as we, it's something we can scale. And so a lot of it's like creating designs or creating concepts that we can use throughout the watershed.
You're actually going, measuring cul, this modeling you're talking about doing is literally true custom modeling of this area as opposed to maybe, uh, we went to the, the U S flood map and.
Yeah.
Did some calc, this is not, this is not sort of an algorithmic thing, you're actually doing that stuff.
Yeah.
That's impressive.
Yeah, and so, cause how a culvert works, I mean, we, I saw some today that are not functional. Or they have like openings that are like this tall, but like all this water coming through and those, that will show up in the model. And that's, I think that's something that doesn't, and there's, they're also looking at storm drains and storm drain sizes, which are things that like the FEMA model doesn't really show. And that gives us a look at kind of more urban flooding that we might see because.
Not doing anything on how to manage beaver populi- populations by any chance?
That's another one that throws a monkey wrench into any hydrology.
But, and there is, I mean, part of, there is, there is things related to that in the framework. Cause we did, we went, I went through all the hazard mitigation plans and kind of pulled out what was a commonality between towns and it's something every town deals with. Like I think most have beavers, so. So you can go to the.
We have happy beavers here, they really like it here.
They don't need a lot, I mean, they just need trees to chew on, there's plenty of those, right?
Right.
Um, so we'll skip over this, but just to show it real quick, this is just our project schedule for the upcoming, for the next year, a couple of years and just some of the tasks. So there's a lot of work.
Cause this was, that, that schedule was actually interesting to me.
Yeah.
In the twenty, that was twenty twenty-three, I, I was trying to just, the, at this level, it's kind of like management and public involvement. It's like, yeah, but what are you doing? The, the flood, it sounded to me like the flood model was the twenty twenty-three focus, the model that you have.
Yep.
It sounded like the flood model, uh, the, somewhere in here I saw it, it was, it almost sounded like maybe you were doing more in-depth modeling, not simply about overall flows and where water goes. But under specific event scenarios, what that would cause. So I, that's kind of what I came away with for the schedule in the second year was to get a more refined and maybe more micro model around flooding. The only question that I was left with, I was just trying to figure out what it was from this, so this limited. The only other question I had is, again, from a technical standpoint, if the effort so far has been focused on flooding. And certainly in the second year, it's a more sophisticated focus on flooding. Are there other, uh, I'll, I'll use the word technical, but technical things that are the focus for the second year? Or is the real core here, we're working on flooding and then, it would make sense if you were, I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, no, no, we're gonna, we're gonna look more at the flooding and kind of like make the model better. Cause I think you can always make improvements and I think that's part of what we're, what we're working on. And there's, there's a lot that goes into the flood model, like it's, it's, it's kind of an incredible model. And we're trying to find, we're even looking at the different dam, like how, how different towns manage dams when there's storm events coming. We're kind of looking at that kind of thing too.
Okay.
And so we're, that, that's a lot of, what we're working on is refining that and then getting better data out of it to see where the flooding really is. And then, um, and then kind of looking this, and what, once we know where the flooding is, then we're going to kind of start looking at concepts. And I don't, I don't know if we'll have anything concrete or, but, or, but we're going to try to find locations or areas that really need it the most.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So you can go on to the next one. And so the, yeah, so this kind of goes to that. So the next steps and action items, um, we're looking for, we have this climate resilience collaborative steering committee. And what that is, is we have this framework with all these lists of priorities of different things that the towns themselves have made a priority and some things that we, we kind of pulled out as well. And so this, this would be people from the town that, it's not necessarily town, town officials or people that work directly for the town. But people who are knowledgeable about the town and can kind of um, sort of speak on the behalf or speak on the interest of the, the town. And so they're, that's to kind of look through the framework that we have and all the different priorities and kind of help pick out the ones that the towns would like to work on the most or what should be priorities for the towns. So that's kind of what we're looking at for that. And that's something we can keep, keep talking about as it goes on. We do want to have the first meeting within later, like late spring or early summer. And so that's kind of, we're kind of looking for people for that. We're looking to help the project team identify, identify community organizations, particularly those working and serving priority populations or like the more vulnerable populations. Um, like maybe public health, people like organizations working in public health or like organizations working with the elderly and those kind of things that, that are going to be affected more by, by climate change. People are more, more mobility, mobility, so like if there's areas that flood, like we want, we want those people that like understand transportation and those kind of things also be involved. If there's like community groups working on that kind of thing. And then to support regional efforts to build climate resilience throughout the watershed. Where you are in a unique position of having in two watersheds and you've been working with the Charles. And um, I think we always want the support from the communities for the work that we're doing too. Um, we are, we are trying to, and working to, to do, to do the best in that realm. It's just, and we're working with grant funding and like the community support that we get from you guys really helps us push these things forward and to actually get to implement projects. So those are kind of remain asks. We have the, as we mentioned, there's like, there's an event coming up later in February, the community event. And so, and so we're always looking for people that, we had the first one, but like, we're always wanting more people to be involved, we want to hear from more voices.
Is there an advantage given that there is, the Charles River has already done this and I. Christine, where, we have Moet, Moet, he was the contact point for that, right? Is our D P W director.
Yeah, throwing, Sarah, the time now.
Okay.
And um, is there, not necessarily that they have to be exact same people, but is, would there be an advantage in our particular unique circumstance to actually have someone who's already doing the Charles River stuff to be involved with this?
That would make sense, sure. Cause look at a whole town approach, right?
Yeah.
And they, they have, and they have an understanding of the process and like kind of how it goes and what the flood model looks like. And so I think that's, that's always kind of a useful, useful to have.
Okay.
And we, I mean, something that's nice for us is like working with Weston Sampson is they also worked on the Charles River. And so like they, they came to our project with all this knowledge and experience from doing it in the Charles River that they're able to like work on and apply to the Nippon's one. And so.
You have the benefit of the work they did before.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's.
Time, timeframe for what you're.
For the.
You asked for two.
But I'm hitting it with strength, right?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be like in the, the late spring.
Late spring, okay. Okay.
All right, Gus, any more questions?
No, 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 I, I've way overstayed my welcome here.
Yes, you have.
Oh, to, you had, you had the question about precipitation, it's like drought versus heavy rainstorms. And, and kind of, that's something that we're, we're seeing and kind of like expected for this, this region more, more than like the most of the state is that there's going to be less, there, there might be like less rain during the summer. Or the storms come less often, but are more severe. And so there's going to be like, there might be longer periods without rain and then you'll get all that rain in, in like a week period. Like we've seen like fudged up. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And from, from year to year, it's gonna, it's gonna fluctuate, but the, the kind of trend that they were looking at is like over a period of time. So one year there might be less and then one year there might be way more, but like it's the average of all those years that we're kind of looking at increasing.
I'm good, no, thank you, it was very helpful.
Thank you for the time on your agenda.
Thanks for coming.
And for your questions, I think that.
So um, I, I wondered if the Charles River water, Charles, well, I know the Charles River Watershed Association seems to have a position on dams. I think they think they should get removed. Does the Nippon's River Watershed Association have a policy position on dams?
Um, I would say it depends on the dam. I think that there, there's some that it makes sense to keep and there's some that it makes sense to get rid of. So just, like some, some of them will actually, in the kind of the day that we're getting is, a lot of towns do adjust their dams when there's storms coming. And that, that's all capacity. So if like you lower the water of the dam, like a foot, then you might be able to absorb, you, you have a foot more of water that you can take in and reduce flooding. Like the initial, cause what about, we're, we're trying. initial, cause what we're, we're trying to do is like when we, when the first floods, there's a huge surge of water and, and like that's what, and I mean, I think you guys all know this, that's when the water goes up. But if we, if we can take that surge and just hold it for a little bit, then that reduces what the peak of the flooding is gonna be and like makes it a little, a little bit more of a gentle curve, flooding curve. And so dam, dams can help with that. And I think that dams that do that kind of thing makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a question online from Chris Potts, who asks you, when will your new flood models begin to appear on the various official GIS maps?
I don't, I don't know if they'll go through the official flood maps. I think that that's gonna be predominantly FEMA. I think our flood maps and the Charles River water flood maps are both available on our websites. Like the, the model that we created last year is available now on our website and it comes with different, a lot of different information. So we showed like a 10-year storm and a two-year storm and that has up to like a hundred-year storm. So like a flood that we would expect once every hundred years that are happening more than once every hundred years and kind of seeing the impact of that now versus 2070. So all that stuff's available.
She also asks, um, are, are these flood models separate from the new expanded wetland delineations?
Um, they are separate, yeah.
Yes. Okay, well, I guess that's it then. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. For coming in. We're into the discussion items, potential votes, 2024 Town Meeting and FY25 Budget Items. Chris?
So we were all at the MMA Annual Meeting and we heard the governor discuss what she will be filing for her budget, which I believe we're filing, she's filing tomorrow. So we'll have our final numbers, but our preliminary cherry sheet estimates show we'll receive about $123,000 more than we did last year, so. Yay.
Is that net of the not paying off our loan anymore?
Uh, so that is, does not include any of our assessments or charges. We're still waiting to see what those are. So this is the 123,000 without, we haven't, they've only given us what they're giving us, not what they're taking from us yet.
The state hospital.
The state hospital will come off.
We paid that off though.
We have a half a payment this year, half a payment, yeah.
Half still, okay.
Yeah. So we haven't seen that yet. We've just seen the cherry estimate, cherry sheet estimate so far. So we're, we're waiting for that, kind of in a budget hold until we get more information on that. I am pleased to report that the Public Employment, Public Employee Committee, which we call the, the PEC or the PEC, met last week and we have come to an agreement on planned design changes for the health insurance, which will be a cost savings both to the town and more importantly to our employees. We were facing a approximately 10% increase in our health insurance this year and we're hoping to have reduced that down to status quo for this year. So we're just waiting for the final numbers. Maya also announced at the annual meeting that those should be coming momentarily. So we'll work on finalizing the agreement with the PEC and move forward with the cost savings on that. So we're kind of in a budget hold until we get those two key pieces of information. If you want to move on to the next, votes open and close the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. After we closed it, there were a few housekeeping articles that came into us from town departments as well as our own select board articles. So let me let you know, let me just give you a list of what those are. So we'll be adding this evening, uh, an article for our Park and Recreation Revolving Fund. Park and Recreation Commission is investigating whether they should move from a 53D revolving account to a 53E and a half departmental revolving account. The timing of our class and compensation study, although it's moving forward, I think we have a meeting Friday or Monday regarding that, is going to come in so close to us printing the warrant that we can't change the budget numbers for that now and we don't have a final budget number. So I'm going to include it in a warrant article to reserve that. So we're not making changes to each line item budget on the town meeting floor. We will have an article now for the Medfield State Hospital for Operation and Maintenance. We're going to need to budget something going forward for the next fiscal year. We're also gonna have an article for a discussion of the Hinckley North property and I'm going to also add a placeholder article in for Danielson Pond. Given what happened in the most recent storm, we may have to take some action on that pond sooner rather than later. So we'll put that in as a placeholder if we need it and if not, we can always dismiss it at town meeting.
But does it exist the appropriation for pond survey that's already there?
Uh, it can't be used for any operations and maintenance. I think it's $6,500 is left.
Yeah, there's, so there's two, there's the $5,000 maintenance that they have and then there's an existing article, I think from 2019.
No, this, your, your outline that you passed, I've already had.
No, that's, that's separate for pond maintenance. It's a separate article. Yeah.
Did we, did, I don't know if we came to a conclusion on the inclusionary zoning question?
No.
From a placeholder standpoint.
No, we can add that in as a placeholder as well.
I think we might want to do that, add that in as a, as a placeholder at this point, the inclusionary zoning question around potential by law.
Okay. So I will add that in. So there'll be a sixth edition tonight and that will be inclusionary zoning and we'll have that discussion. Okay. So that, okay. So that is six that we'll be adding. So I just need you to vote to open, includes those six articles and then close the warrant.
One question.
Sure.
Yes. Bill?
Given what's going on with, with T-CAM and are getting close to getting all the issues resolved at the hospital, are there, you aware of some of the problems that we're still having?
Yep.
And the potential need for some higher level environmental?
Yes, and we have, we still have funding available for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Gus, any questions?
Uh, nope, nope. I think I just asked it.
Yeah, sorry. No, I'm fine.
I'm fine, too. Do you want to craft a motion then around that? Eileen, please.
All right, so vote to reopen the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant to include the six warrants that we just discussed.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye aye.
And a vote to close it.
Oh, and a vote to close.
Yeah.
The annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye aye.
Thank you.
Next action item, vote to approve Comcast lease for equipment shed at 55 North Meadows. This is like the head something or other.
Right. Head end unit.
We get around 40,000 a year or something for?
Yes, this, uh, this actually goes back prior to, to Frank. Nick had done the RFP before he left. We had some discussion at a selectman's meeting and we are now, after about another six to eight months of negotiating the ground lease, this is where we have landed for our final draft.
38,000 for the first five years, 44,000 a year for the second five years.
Right.
Little corner of the town garage.
They've actually got a separate little building.
Yeah, so yeah, it's outside, right?
Yeah, they have a little building there.
Looks like it butts Allendale.
Correct.
Questions, Gus?
A couple, yes, I do. On the second page of the lease document, number one, want to confirm this is retroactive one and a half years. It really does start on June 1st, 2022?
Yes, they've already sent in their payment for those years.
Okay, but it was the wording, I want to make sure, cause then the paragraph below it says the town acknowledges that Comcast has paid in full all real estate and personal property tax owed to the mount, owed to the town through May 31st, 2022. What did they do? It's an annual payment or something? So the next payment's due in May. And then I think this is a typo, paragraph six, it's on that same page, two tenants' obligations for payment of utilities and other operating expenses. About halfway down, there's a list of things, town hereby grants to Comcast during the tan, during the term in any renewals of this lease, the right to install, access and maintain cable, open perenn, including coaxial and fiber, closed perenn, and telephone wiring and related equipment, open perenn excluding antenna and/or satellite dishes, closed perenn. And then it says unless approved in advance by the town. I think that quote, that phrase doesn't belong there, cause it's, the statement is the town approving it.
Right.
So I think it's just some remnant words that didn't belong there.
Right. Well, I think that modifies the antenna and satellite dishes unless they're approved by the town, cause they're not included at this point.
No, it says town hereby grants. The, the start of that sentence says that we're granting.
But it's excluding antennas and satellite dishes unless we do grant it.
Oh, then that's
Oh.
Yeah, I think, I think it's okay.
I'm losing my parentheses.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a, it's a, way too many parentheses in that.
Those lawyers, you know, they, they talk funny.
So this is
Yeah, I think, I think that's okay.
Probably another complete sentence would have been, okay. Okay, well, thank you, Pete.
I think all of those should have been separate sentences.
I, I read, I read it wrong.
Anything else, Gus?
That was it.
Eileen?
No, no, it looks good. I'm assuming we're getting a kind of a going rate for anybody of, any other town that's leasing a space of this type.
Kind of a unique situation.
Yeah.
Unique, so we have them over a barrel, so should, we should double the rent, you mean, or?
In, in 2033, we can talk about that.
All right. Do we have a motion then?
All right. Motion to approve the Comcast lease for equipment shed at 55 North Meadows.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizen comment?
I have nobody registered for citizen comments.
The consent agenda is empty, the meeting minutes, I haven't reviewed those, so if we could hold those till the next meeting. Have you guys done them or am I the only one?
I've done. They were pretty straightforward.
Town administrator updates?
A few things, just a reminder, February 8th, Representative Garlic will be doing her State of Community Address in person at the Public Safety Building. This week
I think it's seven o'clock, too.
It's seven, yes, correct. This week we had a meeting with Norfolk County regarding our ARPA funding and as you know, we have to have our final commitment to spend the money by December 31st. Our grant agreement ends with Norfolk County on June 30th, so they have asked for a full spending plan by March 1st. We are still having some discussions with them on some timing issues of when we can expend that money. I am engaging Capital Strategy Solutions to help us prepare that final plan for the county, which is due in March. Failure to complete that plan could possibly result in the county taking our money back from ARPA and reissuing it to other cities and towns. So I'm going to engage Jen Thompson and Capital Strategy Solutions to make sure we don't leave any money on the table. So, just to let you know, and we will be presenting a plan to you before March 1st. I mentioned, we're gonna, we have a meeting next week about Danielson Pond. And just thank you to all my staff that attended the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting, having the selectmen there. I know, Eileen, you couldn't be there and I know it killed you. So it was just a great turnout, both on the school and town side. It's great to have that networking with our peers and to bring back some really great ideas. So I appreciate, it's sad to me when I talk to other town administrators who don't bring any staff and their, you know, select board have no interest in attending and I think it's just a huge loss for those towns that don't do that. So, thank you.
Then the meeting dates going forward are on the agenda, if you want to see those, select board?
March 12th is still a conflict on the
Yes, we're, we're working on that. Yep.
Select board member reports, Gus?
First up, there was supposed to be an OPEB trust fund meeting and it got rescheduled, but I don't, do you know, is there a date for that one?
I'm reaching out to, I haven't heard back from the consultants yet, the actuaries.
Okay, so it's not that, the only reason I super cared was because I attended the OPEB Learning Lab at the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting and they act, I actually picked up some new insights from them, talking about things. And the interesting part about the insight is to recognize that the OPEB trust, the OPEB obligations we have are, they're certainly long-term financial obligations, but they are not subject to the same degree of rigor in terms of funding that retirement pension obligations are. And I hadn't fully appreciated that, but what, what, the issue that was on the table in the breakout that I had was as you, or at least part of it, was as we start to build up our fund balance, we have a lot of flexibility about how we choose to build that fund balance up and how we start, choose to start spending that fund balance down. We actually can get to a point where, without necessarily even, potentially without necessarily even being fully funded and by that, by the actuaries' calculations, where we would kind of shift. Right now, what we do is we make a contribution and we still cover our benefits on a pay-as-you-go basis. So we're making a pretty sizable contribution to the OPEB obligation by not taking anything out and leaving everything in. But at some point in time, we'll have a, we'll probably will first hit a point where we sit there and say, when do we stop increasing our annual contribution? And I haven't had a lot of time to think about that, but it's probably at the point where the contribution offsets whatever the actual benefits were at the very least. But then you can still figure out, would you really want to just lock up 30 years' worth of payments in, in a fund and invest it? Maybe we do. But I hadn't thought about, I hadn't, I'd, we've been so busy trying to put money into that fund, I never actually thought about, what would you do when you finally get to the point where you can consider taking money out? So that was, that was kind of a nice discussion. I signed up for a Council on Foreign Relations webinar on the gray wave. I figured I probably qualified for that group, so I had to listen to what they say. And that, it, it was, it was a demographic discussion, talking about how population distribution by age is different in different countries. Basically, developed countries, it's like ours where the people are living longer, so the upper ends of the, of the age range, there's a lot of, there's a lot more people there than there used to be. Most of the developing countries, it looks like a little Christmas tree where it just kind of goes to a point and that's not so for developed countries. So I found that interesting. The only thing I was a little disappointed is they talked about the demographics, but not about the economics that fall out of the demographics, but, or not enough. Went to the annual meeting. I thought it was a good meeting. I got a lot out of the, the breakouts I went to. I will make an editorial observation that I was, I perceive that there is a shift, perhaps tied to the leadership of the MMA, toward a progressive liberal democratic bias, which was noticeably different this year. Every keynote speaker started off with basically political commentary and some of the leaders did. This isn't even Democrat, Republican. This is progressive liberal Democrat. And I think MMA will be making a big mistake because those aren't the only leaders in this state that they represent. So that caught me by, it, it caught me a little bit by surprise. There's always been a bit of a bias toward that, but that was the one sort of disappointment. Food was great. The, the schedule was good. The breakouts I went to were very informative. It's always fun to see everybody in the conversations, even for people that, you know, I didn't know before that just met on the spot, it was fun. But that one piece, particularly given that it was all the keynote speakers and, and some of the top leadership uniformly, it was disappointing, that piece. The planning board meeting last night, we all went, we all listened to, so that, I thought that was a good meeting around the MBTA communities. We're not out of the woods on that, but at least I thought it was a productive discussion and I was more optimistic. And then finally, for anyone out there who's interested in ski report, I can vouch for for anyone out there who's interested in ski report, I can vouch for Waterville Valley being really good. Nice blue skies and good conditions yesterday. Make, make sure your edges are sharpened. It was hard pack powder, but outside of that, it was a much better day than the forecast said it would be. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Eileen?
All right. I have recovered, so I did not go to MMA.
We missed you.
Yeah, well, I've thought of you guys, but I also thought I didn't want to contaminate anybody. So I too sat in the planning board session last night. I think that there's been such genuine effort to look at where we can try to set aside the land and, and achieve what the state may be asking for to a certain extent without burning the town and changing the, the look of the field. So I thought it was a really good meeting. And then I think next week I've got my Affordable Housing Trust February meeting, but other than that, all's good.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with the planning board meeting last night on the MBTA Communities Act zoning because I thought that it was very illuminating for me. The planning board is focusing the, and, and our requirement is to rezone fifty acres for, at fifteen units per acre density as of right. And they're focusing their efforts, the, the land that they're looking at is basically along one oh nine and twenty-seven. And they're, they're, they're leaving out some parcels that, that I had thought maybe we would look at, but I liked their thinking. And they actually came up with a, a very, what I think is a a very workable solution to what I had thought was going to be a, a massive problem to come up with rezoning to, to make this work. The areas that they were focusing on in the, in the downtown were already at ten units an acre, so that it's not a very big jump to get to the fifteen units per acre. One of the things that they're doing is focusing on, on areas that have small lots because then you're less likely to get someone to accumulate all of the lots to create a much bigger development. They steered away from things such as the Shaw's Plaza because that is such a large parcel that it could get redeveloped as a very big dense multifamily at fifteen units an acre. It could be a very big complex. So I thought, I was very encouraged by the, the work the planning board's already done and, and we're trying to figure out whether the, any of the state hospital can qualify for that or part of what our obligation is on that. On the Mass Municipal Association, I would disagree with you about the progressive liberal bias, Gus. It just happens that our, that our, you know, our repres, we, we heard from Mara Healy, we heard from Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll.
They were good.
We heard from Elizabeth Warren and, and Ed Markey.
They were not.
And they all tend to be Democratic politicians. And so that's probably your issue, I think, but.
No, it's, it's the liberal.
I, I thought the focus was on, on climate change and the fact that the, the federal government has created this huge, huge pool of money, billions and billions of dollars. And we had Gina McCarthy, who was the former administrator of the EPA, talk to us about the one thing that I remember her saying is that the technology exists. And so that she was, she was very hopeful. She's a, I, I think, I didn't know her, but I think of her as a firecracker. She was a very good speaker, very entertaining. Talked about her Boston accent and, and having trouble saying carbon to people in Washington. Then I, I went to a program in one of the breakout sessions on federal funding. And we had the, the head of the, Governor Healy's created a, a, a group. I don't know whether it's exactly what it is, but this guy's in charge of helping us get the federal funds. So he explained how to get this, and it's billions and billions of federal funds. And so that we should be making sure we're doing everything we can to get our part of that. And then the next speaker was a, a guy from the US Treasury and he was explaining how they're going to pay it out. It's, it's not going to be, it's going to be credits, but on your, they call it direct pay. So they're just going to push the money out to you. You're not going to have to wait and file a tax return to get the credit. It struck me from, from just listening to them that you can get up to like a thirty percent reimbursement for things like micro grids and geothermal. And if you really work it, you can get up to fifty percent. So I think there's just, there's a tremendous amount of money. The, I went to another breakout session on, on housing conversions. It was like converting municipal buildings into housing projects. And the one guy who had a PhD who was doing this asked us to to guess how many funding sources he had to have for his project. And it turned out that I think he'd had nineteen different sources of funding to get to his, whatever it was, thirty million that he was getting to. It was, you know, historic tax credits, state tax credits, affordable housing tax credits. These projects like, like Trinity's doing up at the state hospital are very complicated. And there's, there's, you have to pull together a lot of different things to cobble together a lot of things to make it work. So I don't know. I found it very interesting. I even like going around to the trade show. They have these, all these booths of people that tell you different things. And I, I always seem to learn something new that I don't know exists there. So that's helpful. And the person from DEP said, oh, Men, you're from Menfield. Nancy Irwin is tremendous. So.
We agree.
And that's it for me. Anything else that we need to do, Chris?
No, thank you.
We have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Thanks, Medfield TV.